Commission, we'll call the meeting to order. And if we could start with the roll call, actually, we'll start, excuse me, we pledge allegiance, excuse me, if you'd join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And now, if we could, Mr. Moran, the roll call, please.
Lisa Shering.
Here.
Jeff Moore, absent. Mark Vavazza.
Here.
John Nenberger, absent. Hart Nelson.
Here.
Paul Moran, here. John Ritter.
Here.
Leslie Nichols.
Here.
Sherri Bilderbeck. Oh, she's there, so I'm going to say she's here.
Can see her.
Yeah, we can see her, she's top central.
Yep. All right.
So, we have a quorum. Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moran. The agenda has been distributed. Any changes or adjustments to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those, and I think we can do, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, agenda is approved. Also, the minutes have been distributed. Any changes or alterations to the minutes from our December 8th meeting? Ask that we get that corrected. Any other changes or updates to the minutes? All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Or actually, can we do that by acclamation? Any objections to approving the minutes by acclamation with that change? Seeing none, motion, the minutes are approved by acclamation. Citizen comments, do we have any citizens wishing to address the commission on any issue not in part of our new or old business? Kelly, did we have anyone that, I don't know if we had a sign up sheet? No?
No.
Okay, not aware of it, all right, thank you. We had no old business, three items of new business. We'll start with P&amp;Z 22, we're going to get used to that, 2201. This is Kitchen Conservatory Site Development Plan and Conditional Use Permit at 9001 Manchester Road. Is the applicant, or the petitioner present? Could you please approach and just tell us a little bit about, state your name and address for the record? And I believe we've spoken before, so you update us on where things stand with the project.
I'm a little short for this, I think. My name is Ann Corey, and I'm the owner of Kitchen Conservatory, and I would like to renew the application to start this development at 911 Manchester Road for Kitchen Conservatory.
Excellent, and I do recall that we've spoken with you before, and we approved this before. Any, I guess at this point, any significant changes to the application that you submitted some time ago?
No.
Excellent. I think we'll go then to staff report. If I could just take chairman's privilege, Sherri, can you give us a thumbs up, just want to make sure you're hearing us all right? All right. Don't have to stand there, we can watch or look at this presentation if we have any questions. We'll ask you to come back to the podium, thanks. I know it's a little uncomfortable. All right.
Kelly, on behalf of the City of Brentwood, the applicant is here requesting a conditional use permit and site plan approval for the property at 9001 Manchester Road for Kitchen Conservatory. The original proposal was initially reviewed at the Planning and Zoning Commission on October of 2019 and received a recommendation of approval on January of 2020. The Board of Aldermen approved the ordinance on February 3rd of 2020. Conditional use permits and site development plans are approved or valid for one year unless substantial construction has begun. The applicant did receive a one-year extension, which is the maximum allowed under our zoning code, which is why she's here tonight, as substantial construction has not begun. There were a couple of changes to the site, overall, the site remained the same. The original building was approximately 7,000 square feet, it is now 6,000 square feet. It will contain three residential-type kitchens for cooking classes and a retail area for purchasing of product. Each kitchen will hold a maximum of 20, and this is the same as the prior application. And there will be two instructors per kitchen area. The original proposal had a more rounded element at the corner, a rotunda, and the southeast corner of the building was shortened to create two additional parking spaces. So this is the 2019 site plan, with the highlighted change area indicated in red. The current proposal, you see, is the squared-off building, and then the southeast corner was shortened to add to additional parking spaces here. The building is mostly brick and stone veneer. It does introduce a new element that was not a part of the original application, which is you have ephesus above the windows, where you would have, at the top of the building. And here you can see the color element in the new ephesus indicated here. The G C District has architectural standards that the use of metal siding is prohibited on any elevation that is visible from Manchester, Brentwood, and Eagle Road, and mechanical equipment installed on any roof shall be screened on all sides to deter the transmission of sound to residential areas, and that it is a building material consistent with the rest of the building. As you can see, it is a wood, and it is not, there are wood panels that are screening the material here for the rooftop equipment. Not part of the Manchester corridor, the Manchester district, or Manchester district, it is part of Manchester corridor, the Manchester zoning district does limit the use of ephesus and stucco to, not on the first floor, and not more than 30% of the wall area is exclusive of windows and doors. The proposed building elevation includes the use of new ephesus above the windows. It does seem to appear to be consistent in that it's less than 30%, but this is the commission should discuss with the applicant about the use of this ephesus and if they feel it's appropriate for this setting, or if they will need, want to make a recommendation for other options, they should do so as an amended motion if you make that recommendation tonight. See, the 2020 elevation included a metal portion here, and then all of this was brick, and it had wood accents here, as well as the rooftop screening, so this is the distinction between the current proposal and the previous proposal. The landscape plan was also very similar, so it was not reviewed by the city's landscape architect consultant to a full degree, but however, there were a few trees missing along the rear of the property. The applicant has indicated that that was not intentional, that the building just left off, so we did include a condition that that be, that the landscape plan matched the original proposal. So this is the original proposal, and they had a tree here, and then a number of trees here that were total of 25. The current proposal left a tree out here and reduced the number of piers, so we just recommend that it be, match the prior plan, provide sufficient screening to, and buffering to the residents to the north. The other conditions of approval within the staff report are consistent with the prior approved plans. We did not do a full traffic study, as that was all reviewed at the prior approval, but these items were just, are carried over from the prior ordinance consistency. Available for any questions.
Any questions for staff from any of the commissioners? Do you believe we may have a couple of questions for the applicant, though, if you don't mind stepping back to the podium? So one of the questions, of course, is, we appreciate your interest still, and I'm going to open it up for the rest of the commissioners as well, but appreciate your interest, just wanted to see if you had any updates for us on potential construction timelines. I know this is, understand certainly why this has been delayed, but just wanted to understand if you had any ideas on when you might start construction for the project.
Well, obviously, if this is approved, we would then start construction.
So this coming, this year, you're looking at? Okay, okay. All right, any questions from any of the other commissioners? Please, Ms. Shering.
I'm just curious. I'm Lou Keating, E, Keating, E Associates Architects. The main reason is economics. The costs, as you probably all know, have gone up about 25% because of the pandemic, and what we're trying to do is simplify it, but I also think we've got a much better building, because we really have a glass cube at the corner, and I think we simplified it, but I think it's a better building.
Ms. Bilderbeck, I don't know if you can hear us, but if, wanted to see if you had any questions.
I can hear you now, I'm very excited.
We still can't hear you, unfortunately. We can see you're speaking, but we can't hear you.
I unmuted.
Technical difficulties, unfortunately. Apologies for that. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the commission on this application? Sir, please, if you can come to the podium, state your name.
Keith Thodel, Jean Del Printing. The one tree that was removed from the plan was because it was right up against Jean Del Printing's front wall area, and it was so close that it would be growing into our building and overhanging our roofline with...
That was one on the furthest west and furthest south, I believe, on the map, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so that is a, sorry, that's a tree that you wish to not have?
Correct.
As part of the landscaping plan. Any concerns from the commission on that, or from staff? Okay, so part of the condition that it be substantially consistent, but to consider that it doesn't infringe on, basically, on the neighboring property?
Well, it's a, right away, or easement, I'm sorry, it's an easement between the two properties. It's not their property. How far does the easement, it was like 10 feet, I think, or? The building? I think there's a 10-foot easement off the building.
I think the concern was about the tree that is, my understanding is the furthest south, furthest west, that was on part of the landscaping plan, that it would be infringing on Jean Del's property, or on the easement that is there. And just concerned to make sure that that wasn't something that was going to be infringing on their property when the landscape review is completed, to make sure that it is substantially consistent with what was submitted before, but the type of tree chosen, or basically that it, do what it can to make sure that it's not infringing on the property. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any objections to that from the petitioner? All right, any other questions from members of the public? All right. Further discussion from commissioners? If not, we do have a suggested motion with some recommendations, that is on page 12 of staff report. Do you want to commend staff for the completeness of the staff reports this session, they've been great, really helpful, so appreciate that, I know a lot of work goes into those. And a motion, or?
Yeah, I move to recommend approval of the site plan and conditional use permit for the Kitchen Conservatory of the property addressed at 9001 Manchester Road, per the condition as presented in the staff reports and drawings reviewed at this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mr. Vavazza.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yep, it's fine. Yes.
Ms. Shering.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Bilderbeck.
Yes, I see a yes and thumbs up.
Sign language is effective.
Yes.
And Paul Moran, yes. So that's carried unanimously, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we look forward to seeing that construction start, and look forward to seeing Kitchen Conservatory here in Brentwood. Thank you. All right, next up is Planning and Zoning 2202, this is Site Development Plan Review for the Exterior Renovation of the Building at 2428 South Brentwood Boulevard for St. Louis Cremation, Office Use Only is the petitioner here. If you could step forward, state your name and address, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening, I'm Robert Sroth, owner and architect with Sroth &amp; Company Architects, and we're proposing a renovation at 2428 South Brentwood Boulevard of the old Hunan Whack Building. It's in the Planned Development Overlay District. We're proposing an interior and an exterior renovation for, and strictly an administrative building. Obviously, no cremations or funerals will be held at this site, it's strictly an administrative office and sales building, so just to clear that up here, we're proposing a new entry facade that includes Tigerwood rain screen, and I believe we've submitted a material package that you guys can review. The material package contains the actual colors, these samples are more indicative of the texture, so these samples don't necessarily match the colors that are being proposed. Again, it's just for texture. So on the, on the, on the western facade, we're proposing a Tigerwood rain screen, similar to the effect that we have on our building at 2900 South Brentwood, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that architectural office there, but it's a really nice Tigerwood rain screen product, and so we're proposing that on the front elevation, as well as boreal 1x6 true exterior channel siding in dark gray. And we're installing that in a vertical manner. And then the other element on the front west facade is stucco in the bottom right corner of the building. And then we're proposing an aluminum-clad marquee, and swapping out all of the windows on the front elevation, and then as we move around the building, we're also adding some windows to the side elevations. So that's a quick overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'm sure there are some.
There will be, I'm sure, if we could do staff report first, and then?
Okay, great.
Questions? Kelly, staff report, please. Is, what is, I'm not familiar with what poly-ash is, is that?
Similar to a fiber cement board, like a hardy board siding.
Okay.
It's a competitor of hardy board. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Kelly, please. Ms. Kelly, just a couple of questions, real quick, and I'll open up to commissioners. Did I understand correctly that you think that there would only need to be the changes to landscaping if it goes to a comprehensive sign plan, or you think that it could be part of the conditions? I see that listed as a conditions for, to this evening.
Yeah, it should be part of the conditions.
Okay.
Because it's inside of the...
And I assume that for a remodel like this, business like this, this is an office building, there's no need for cross-access, or anything like that?
Um, oh, there, this is already, it's on the back.
Any questions from any of the commissioners for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see it in here, how many people we expecting to be working in there, and how many parking spaces are therefore required?
Um, I think it's, uh...
Yeah, I just must have just missed it.
Is that your understanding as well, Mr. Sroth?
Yes.
Okay, and just, I remember you being in here for 2900 South Brentwood, and it does look really nice.
Oh, thank you.
So if this looks like that, then this guy's got a previous track record of doing a really good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions from commissioners? Any member of the audience, or excuse me, the public, wish to address on this application? Ms. Bilderbeck, we're going to try again and see if you have any questions, or we're able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
I see you're not muted, and we still can't hear, so we are going to get that fixed before our next meeting, but our apologies. All right, if, seeing none, sorry?
If, if she gets one?
In the chat?
On the box.
Here, if you have any questions, and you want to type in the chat, we'll do our best to relay those. Deck, let's see if we've got any questions. She's good, all right. Easy enough. All right, with that, entertain a motion on this application.
Yeah, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for the exterior modifications of the property addressed at 2428 South Brentwood, per the condition as presented in the staff report and the drawings reviewed at this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It's been moved by Mr. Moran, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ritter. Roll call, please.
Lisa Shering.
Yes.
Leslie Nichols.
Yes.
John Ritter.
Yes.
Mark Vavazza.
Yes.
Sherri Bilderbeck, give us a sign. Thank you. And Paul Moran, yes. And the...
Yep.
It was thumbs up.
Thumbs up, yes, thank you.
Where I'm from, that means yes. That's passed, approved unanimously, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for the application, look forward to seeing it, I would share Mr. Moran's assessment, and look forward to seeing the modernization of that building, it's going to look great. All right, our last order of new business, this is P&amp;Z 22-03, an ordinance amending section 400.1370 and 400.1380 of the zoning code relating to conditional uses in the G C General Commercial District and the P D Planned Development Overlay Districts to eliminate certain auto-oriented and outdated uses. Obviously, no applicant on this, staff report, please. Staff report, please.
Sorry, I did not have my microphone on. And I just threw this in here so you can look at where we're talking about. We're talking about Brentwood Boulevard. The P D district is in the light blue. And then Manchester is the red in the south portion of Brentwood Boulevard, South Manchester, and then west here. I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you could go back to the map, and if I understood correctly from what you just said, the Manchester corridor development, which is kind of the more teal color, these have already been removed as, as conditional uses, is that correct?
Correct. They do still allow for the sale of new motor vehicles, but...
Yeah, there's a millimeter. Can I ask a couple of questions to start off? Just to make sure, and I know that's in the staff report, just to make sure that it's in public session for folks' understanding. This does not eliminate existing businesses' ability to operate, and they are still able to, to perform these functions. Basically, there's grandfather clause. But I do understand, at least if I'm understanding correctly, that if there is a certain amount of, basically renovation of above a certain amount, that then this would trigger. Could you help explain that so that we're, the commission is clear on that?
Yes. The non-conforming sections allow for any non-conforming business to continue to use as, continue to use as is. You just cannot expand or increase the intensity of such use, and you cannot renovate a building more than 50% of its current value. But all of the existing businesses within the Plan Development and G C districts that are these uses or would be allowed to continue use as long, under the same format that they are currently.
What relief would an existing business have if they wanted to, basically, renovate more than 50%? Would that require rezoning at that point, or what would the relief be for them?
There could be a, do you want to?
Would request a variance.
That's what I meant, a variance, not necessarily a remodel.
Establishal hardship.
Yep. I think those were my questions. Open it up to the commission, and then obviously, we're going to take input from the public as well.
Right, so thanks very much for stating, you know, what the different conditions are. What about a change of ownership?
Yeah, as, you, yeah. The non-conforming use can continue even through a change of ownership, as long as the building and the structure remains substantially the same.
Okay. And this isn't meant to be cheeky or anything, but was, was the driver for this, you're new in your position, right? And you came in and you saw the comprehensive plan, and you saw these things, and you wanted to kind of redline through some of the inconsistencies and try to tidy things up, or was this driven by the Board of Alderman or anybody else?
It was really driven by your, the first correction, like trying to create more consistency with the zoning code with the comprehensive plan. And this was the biggest element, I think I noticed first. There's other areas that we will discuss later. But that was really the impetus of this change, yeah.
Okay, I think that's great, I'm all about good housekeeping, well, not in my house, you know, but like for work stuff, very much so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sherry, may require typing, but I want to make sure that you have the opportunity to provide input, and then we will open it up to members of the public for their input as well. Do understand and appreciate giving you a little time to type. The desire to make sure that we're actually following our comprehensive plan, since we did spend considerable time, energy, and effort on making sure that gets updated. Give Sherry just a minute. Okay. And this may be one that we do want to move, but well, that'll be up to the motions. Any members of the public wishing to address the commission on this topic? Sir, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Larry Howe and I live at 872 Renderer Drive. 50% of current value, what is defined as current value? Is it market value, appraised value? How do you determine current value?
I can pull up that code section. If you want to get on to your next statements while I pull that up, that would be fine.
And then I guess my next statement is really just a comment. Significant change to the, to the code. You have two very significant businesses in the city. Wallace Oil, the mobile on the run, Irwin Schwartz. That was, in my opinion, a very superficial review of the, the notes and comments for staff regarding the recommendation of, of this. Certainly, I would hope the commission would tap the brakes, take time to fully understand the impact of what you're looking at, and not take action this evening, but put it on the agenda for the next meeting to give people time to understand what exactly is going on.
Appreciate your input, thank you. And I do think we do want to understand that 50%. One comment I will make also, which of course, and was mentioned in staff report, that is ours, is a recommendation to the, the Board of Alderman, obviously, for any ordinance changes like this, this is our recommendation, and they're the ones who actually would make the vote.
Or typically follow the recommendation of the planning and zoning?
That is, that, their discretion. It has been...
But sharply, do they just agree with whatever comes on?
They have overturned this commission recently. They have voted to overturn this commission, both with positive and negative votes recently. So they...
That's good to know.
So, under Section 43270, ordinary maintenance, repair, or non-conforming uses, it states, "The normal maintenance and repair, replacement, installation, or relocation of non-bearing walls, non-bearing partitions, fixtures, wirings, and plummings may be performed on any structure that is devoted in whole or in part to a non-conforming use. Neither this nor any other provision of this chapter shall be interpreted to authorize any increase in the size or degree of non-conforming use or any violation of the previous provisions of any other sections of this division." Nothing in this chapter, subsection B, is nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to prevent the strengthening or restor, restoring of a structure to a safe condition in accordance with other, with an order of a public official who is in charge with protecting the public safety and who declares such structure to be unsafe, or orders its restoration to a safe condition, where such restoration would not be in violations of Section 403180 and 403190. So then the rest of this section is alterations, remodeling is, a structure devoted in whole or in part of a non-conforming use shall not be renovated, remodeled, or rehabilitated to an extent greater than 50% of its fair market value prior to such renovation, remodel, or rest, rehabilitation. Nor shall the structural system of the building be altered unless the entire structure or use of the structure shall therefore conform to all provisions of the chapter.
The same line, which is in 400.3170 concerning restoration. Term there is then cur, I'm sorry. The term there is then current market value, fair market value.
Mr. Howe, does that give you the answer there? All right, so fair is fair market value. I mean, I want to point out, of course, and I appreciate the input on giving some deliberation to this. This doesn't prevent operation, and what it looks to prevent is additional businesses, and of course, not necessarily prevent, but to make that, eliminate that as a conditional use, as well as expansion. That obviously would be uncovered, covered under that as well.
And I will add that I did send out a notice of this text, proposed text amendment to all properties within the Plan Development and the G C District.
So all of those affected, okay.
Yeah.
Any other, sorry, please, members of the public, please state your name and your address.
My name is Lynn Wallace with Wallace Companies, and the address of our store is 2120 Brentwood. So thank you for allowing me to present our position on this change to the conditional uses. Just to give you a little background, our family-owned business is the owner of that store. We employ close to 1,100 people across the state of Missouri. 54 years ago, my husband started the company after his service from the Army in the 101st Airborne. Our store located in Brentwood was one of, is one of 62 stores that we operate with our own people. Our family business is a fuel-based distributorship, and we distribute fuels for ExxonMobil, for BP, and for Phillips, and for the C-store component, which is on the run. So we're a distributor for them. Why are we here? Because we are adamantly opposed to this, this change in the conditional use. We purchased this store as part of an asset purchase for Mobile Oil in 1993. At first, a customer of ours ran the store and it had service base. In 2008, we began operating the store ourselves, and we took out the service base, and we made the store and on the run. We spent 1.1 million dollars at that time, in addition to the 600,000 that we had allocated as the initial purchase price of the site. But now, it's time to redo the store. From a customer perspective and from a competitive perspective. Just as any of your businesses, if you have businesses or where you work is a business, competition changes, strategy changes, and our customers demand different things. And we are just extremely focused on customer service and giving our customers what they need and desire. So in addition to having the products that our customers want and need, in addition to greeting and thanking our customers, in addition to having a clean store, in addition to looking at what the future might need, what is the future fuel going to be? It could be charging, it will be. I mean, any store that we have built in the last three years, we have included electric charging stations. So if we are, you know, if we can rebuild this store, it would include electric charging stations. But also important is that we have to have the image and the offering that our customers want, and that our competitors are offering and expect. So we've owned this location for 29 years, and it was probably about 30 years old when we purchased it back in 1993. So after 60 years, a facility needs to be rebuilt and expanded. So to date, we have, based on conversations we've had with personnel at the City of Brentwood, we have purchased property surrounding us, and we have invested close to 1.3 million in additional property to be able to rebuild the store. If, so to keep moving forward, we would still need to purchase some more additional property. It would bring us over $4 million that we would have invested before we even look at the cost of what it would take to rebuild the store, which, based on our experience, it would probably, probably be about $3 million additional. So we will have, sorry, this mask, we will have over $7 million invested in that site. And we're very excited about that because we're, we like being in, in this community, we're very community-focused. We support a lot of the organizations that are in the community and, and, you know, donate products and, and monetary donations to any organizations that's having any kind of a fundraiser. But this whole, this whole change seems very discriminatory, and it feels like it's very arbitrary, and this is a commercial street. We have a commercial, a commercial business, and it feels like the City of Brentwood would be picking winners and losers. You can't run a business for 60 years and never renovate it, and never upgrade it, and make it what the customers want. We have a great relationship in all the communities where we operate. Again, we're very supportive. I just feel that we have an inferior site now, and we don't want, I don't feel good even stopping in my own location when it's not the site that I know our, our customers want. So we're willing to invest millions of dollars into this site, into the Brentwood community. And part of it is because we appreciate the support that the community has given to us. This is one of our very most successful stores with the limited amount of fueling dispensers, the limited amount of the size of the building. It's still one of our very most successful stores. If you look at the northern part of Brentwood, on Brentwood Boulevard, and south, we're the only service there for everyone, for fuel and convenience. So again, I would, I know it's not my place, I guess, to recommend, but have a meeting. If, if, if there needs to be some more clarification or understanding, have a meeting of the people that are affected. But just arbitrarily saying, "We're going to X you out and X you out," doesn't feel very good. It feels, again, very discriminatory in that someone's trying to pick winners and losers in this whole, this whole text amendment. So thank you for letting me present, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate it, thank you, Mrs. Wallace. A couple of questions, actually, just to make sure I understand, because it may help the commission understand. Do you believe that the text amendment as it is would impact, again, without expansion? Because I know that you've just answered, actually, a lot of my question. Looking to do expansion, understand absolutely how that would impact it. If you weren't looking to do an actual expansion of space, do you think that the text amendment would impact you? Is it going to be that a remodel would be more than 50% of the fair market value of your business? What I'm trying to get at is, how would this impact your business if you weren't looking to actually grow in physical space?
Well, as I mentioned, Mr. Nelson, we have remodeled that old facility several times. So to do the things that we feel our customers want and to be competitive, the reason we purchased extra property is to expand. Yes, so the text amendment would definitely affect it.
So what I'm understanding is that your customers are saying, I think it is. Your customers are saying, "We want more space." That's part of the problem with... Okay. One, and one, just a comment on understanding about the winners and losers. I will say that that is what a comprehensive plan is supposed to do, though, right? It is supposed to basically take input from all of the, the city and the residents and say, "These are the sorts of things that we want to see in these particular areas." So I just do, I take your point, I think that, I understand that. I think that that may be a correct assessment of, you're saying this and not this. But that is what a comprehensive plan has in many cases. It says you're allowed to do these things and not these, because that's what the city and the residents have said. So I take your point, I understand that, but just want to point out that that's part of what a comprehensive plan is. So I get, any other, but I really appreciate your input. This is extremely helpful, and really, understanding, the key point of how it would impact your business is very important. Any other questions? Any other questions from commissioners, please? Ms. Shering?
I don't know that I have any other questions. I guess, I think that part of our dilemma is, while we may not want six more mobile on the runs up and down Brentwood, but limiting the expansion of those similar businesses. I think that the spirit of the comprehensive plan was to say, "We have some of these services already in our community, and we don't want 10 of them in a half-mile radius." Right?
Very good point.
If I may, I, actually, it's, in general, the comprehensive plan is not to say, "We have enough of these." It is, what is the character of the use and its impact? So, it's, it's not limiting competition. It's not intended, the comprehensive planning process is not intended to say, "We have enough." It is intended to say, "What are the consequences of these land uses vis-à-vis other investments in the community, vis-à-vis quality of life, traffic impacts, environmental impacts, et cetera?" So, and if I may, then, to your initial question, how do we say, "This incumbent user can expand, but no one else can locate?" The answer, that is the nature of a non-conformity regulation. It is that viable enterprises continue until they are no longer viable or no longer wish to be viable, but new entrants conducting that land use activity are prohibited. It is much the way of the comprehensive plan. The essence is to say, "Yes, this, know that." It is the nature of evolving regulatory standards, that there is a transition process. I hope that's helpful to your question.
Any other questions? Mr. Howe, if you don't mind me asking the same question of you, though, if you could go to the podium, just, again, I do think it's helpful for this commission to understand how this change impacts your operating business right now. Well, your operate, it's going to affect your business and the plans that you have for it. If this change was made, considering that it doesn't impact non-conforming businesses until renovation happens, can you tell us how that impacts your business, just so we can understand?
I guess the, the initial answer would be that for us to do any improvements to the building, which was originally a Sinclair service station, probably 55 years ago, it was built for automotive use with the service bay. It would be hard to renovate that building for another purpose, another use. Having Enterprise in the city, it's, you know, world-recognized name, we would be hard-pressed to find another use for it as it stands right now. And, and this would essentially legislate any future tenant of, of a similar business model. We wouldn't be able to lease it.
Thank you.
Is that, is that correct?
I, sorry.
I can clarify, but that's not correct. If it's a similar enough use existing and they're not making any changes to the building...
More than the permitted percentage.
More than the permitted, that would, they would be allowed to continue.
It would, right, because it's a non-conforming, but it's still a non-conforming, and that's...
Pre-existing lawful non-conformity that has a right to continue under new ownership, under new, so long as it's not expanding the non-conforming aspects.
Okay. So, if, if Enterprise were to move out, we could then turn around and lease a Dalamo, Hertz budget? What about the 12-month, I believe there's something in there about 12 months, that after 12 months...
That's an abandonment issue, and that's, that's going to depend on the facts in each case.
Okay. So, abandonment means...
I'm not going to hypothesize what that 12 months might consist of.
Okay. So, as long as we're actively trying to lease it, taking care of the building?
No. I, I'm not going to hypothesize on what the facts might be. You know, we, we all have what the language is, and I don't want to take the chance that I think one thing about the facts and you think another and mislead you. I don't want that to happen.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Quick question.
Yes.
Is all of this transcribed and available in a PDF at some point?
It's recorded, it's out on YouTube.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
I think there's some comments from Ms. Buildavec.
All right. Ms. Kelly, can you take a look at the chat there and see if we can get those comments into the record?
Please, please share my comment. I really think we need to wait one more time meeting on this. We need to have a real conversation about it and consider the input we've been given tonight. Just today, I saw a car at that station trying to charge their electric car at a gas pump, which means the customer expected a charger to be there. Lots of Brentwood residents use this one site, and then the other gentleman, too. I would like to wait until our next meeting. I agree with Lisa's comment as well.
Taking the mood of the commission, I do think one other thing, and I, Ms. Kelly, that basically noticed, we're sent out to those who are in PD and are basically along this corridor. I think that, especially considering this, because we've talked about the business owner impact, I think that's extremely important. That's, that's one of the things that we're here to do, but also neighbors' impact and, and kind of their input as well, because I know that we've heard before on some of these subjects, and I think that that is probably a useful decision point for this commission, hearing from those who may be, you know, basically neighbors, because it does back up upon residential, since I know that that's part of the intent with this code change, or with this, with the ordinance change. So, sorry. Another member of the public, please, come forward, and if you could state your name and your address, please.
Great discussion. My name is Lynn Good. I live at 8783 Brentwood Place. I am behind the mobile station. While I do appreciate the mobile station does provide a great service to a lot of people, there, it's a, we have a couple of no-outlet streets there. We have an alley that we use to make our left turns, unless we want to take our lives into our hands and, and try to make a left turn from, from Brentwood Place. It's pretty tough, especially when there's high traffic on Brentwood Boulevard and cars coming in and out of Mobile and other streets and such. So, I do appreciate the, the spirit of this type of, of plan, the comprehensive plan, including the neighbors and what impact it's going to have, because an expansion of the mobile station, it already has changed to a point where we have huge tanker trucks coming in and out, and the noise has increased, the pollution has increased. It does affect the character of the neighborhood, and I, I know that we need to strike a balance, but we also need to realize that we, we have a lot of homes there. There are people who invested a lot of money in their homes there. There are many, many homes that have added a second story on our street, and are going to need to have a pleasant environment where their children are, where their cars are coming in and out. So, I do appreciate the discussion and striking a balance in Brentwood. Thank you.
Good. All right. I believe that the, well, and actually, I'll look for, if there is a motion, or if we wish to take no action, I believe that is the option. Ms. Kelly is correct. If we wish to take no action, we consider this for our next meeting. Is that one of the options?
Yeah. You have a motion to continue?
Yep. Or to, yeah. Entertain a motion as the commission wishes.
So, of the choices available today or next meeting, I move to continue the discussion on the proposed draft text amendment to further refine the ordinance to the February 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Mr. Mann has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Shering has seconded. Roll call on that.
Leslie, Leslie Nichols.
Yes.
Lisa Shering.
Yes.
John Ritter.
Yes.
Mark Fizer.
Yes.
Sherry Buildavec.
And she is a yes.
Thumbs up are noted. Form around yet, and so that has been accepted unanimously.
Appreciate all the input tonight. Thank you, folks. Again, this is one that I think it is important to hear from the business owners. It's important to hear from the residents, and I think the opportunity to have some additional debate will be very helpful. So, thank you very much. All right. Moving on, that is the last of the new business. Aldermanic report, seeing no Alderman, Director, oh, my goodness. Oh. Well, seeing no Alderman, but seeing one online. Alderman Lockmiller, do you have anything for us this evening? My apologies. And actually, the challenge is, are we going to be able to hear him?
No report.
And it sounds like no. If there is anything in the chat that you wish to share with the commission, we will make sure to get that into the record. Our apologies for the technical difficulties. Moving on to Director of Planning and Development's report.
Do have a, an application for a text amendment for the next meeting, so we will take that up as well. And the text amendment to merge the Planning and Zoning Commission was recommended yet, that is not at, before the plant, the Board of Alderman just yet. They wanted to take it to committee, and then we need to bring it back here. I misspoke and said that I was presenting on behalf of the Board and Alderman, and I would need to clarify that it's not on, so they, still working through the process at this moment. But I will let you know.
Any other new business? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Got to move. Second, we'll stand adjourned.
Yep.
I'm going to use my gavel. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.